Okay, y'all got five o'clock. March 28th, 2024. Special call meeting called the Order. I'll have Brother Coleman for a word of prayer, please.
Hello, Spire, it's heavenly Father with this one thing for this night. Thank you for this business meeting in the City Hall for the City of Hartford. We ask you, bless our city, bless our people in this city, Lord, and Lord, let this business be fixed that it'll be pleased in your sight. And Lord, we just do everything for you. Any of our families are sick, we ask of you to touch them and heal them in Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen, thank you. So basically, first, second. All in favor? If you had a question, ask the question. You don't care.
Oh, no, no, that's not.
Okay, before you have the minutes of the last meeting, after reviewed, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as read.
Make the motion, I'll read out the minutes.
I have a first.
Second.
Second by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sigh, motion carries. Okay, Tara was supposed to be here, she said she was gonna be here. We do have some updates that we're working on, some abandoned properties. She's been working with that, she's got all the paperwork, so hopefully she'll be here in a little bit to tell us about that. Before you have the financial reports, big statements, income, after reviewed, I'll ask for a motion to accept.
May I make a motion to accept the business meet, or the financial report?
I have a first by Tony.
Second.
Sir.
Jeff. Sorry. I'll take stations if you, or I mean, Mary Bell's. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sigh, motion carries. Thank you. We have a second reading ordinance 2024-01. This is the Atmos franchise 20-year agreement. Basically, y'all read that and was informed on that, so with that being said, this will be a roll call vote, so I'll go down, down the line. Jeff?
Yes.
David Coleman?
Yes.
Jerry Lickens?
Yes.
Mary Bell?
Yes.
Tony Remphro?
Yeah.
Sorry. Stacia?
Yes.
Man, I'm telling you. Lisa's gotten me off my rocker here for a little bit. Lisa, hurry up.
I don't even think you're touching the floor.
I don't touch it, though.
All right, thank you. All right, she's working on the financial audit, so I'll let her, we're gonna skip that for a little bit. Chief York, do you care to come up?
Here she comes. Miss America.
Care to relate what you're wanting to implement here?
Here lately, I've been working on a grant, approved for an ad to obtain body worn cameras. Prior to, before we go any further, I'm gonna have to get a policy for these cameras approved. So me and Lisa have been working diligently on trying to get these policies right now, along with the other policies in our policy procedure manual. So basically, these are an updated policy through KLC. These are the model policies associated with body worn cameras. We have added and also added this. And also, I created a custody and control for the body worn cameras. That right there would include the maintenance, the testing, when or when not to utilize these cameras. So pretty much, any encounter with the city, with any civilians within the city, we must activate these cameras. So any deviation from that would be a disciplinary action. And also, we, I have another policy on the drug incinerator. We just received an incinerator a couple of weeks ago, and of course, I wanted to get a head start on the policy because we are going to be able to utilize this multi-agency. So this would actually include the other agencies involved. And also, it's, it comes along with a signage sheet exactly, so it time stamps exactly what's being destroyed in this incinerator, and who is actually there to witness it, so.
Does everybody have a copy of the policy? Roger, do you care to read that policy off, just the top part portion there?
On the body worn camera?
Uh, let's see, the first one on our list was the, yeah.
Body worn.
Yeah, the body worn, I'm sorry.
Okay, the policy of the Hartford Police Department is to provide officers with body worn video recording devices in the effort to collect evidence to be used in the prosecution of those who violate the law for officer evaluation and training, and to provide accurate documentation of law enforcement and citizen interaction. The use of the body worn video system provides persuasive documentary of evidence that helps defend against civil litigation allegations of officer misconduct. Officers assigned to the use of these devices shall adhere to the operational objectives and protocols outlined herein to maximize the effectiveness of the utility of the body worn camera and the integrity of evidence related to the documentation.
All right, thank you.
I think it's gonna be similar to the ones they're gonna order.
Be the exact same.
That's good.
So basically, with these, since we get them, there would be a, all of the data would be downloaded to a class, so the storage system, we wouldn't actually have to have any kind of hard storage, and that'd be reviewed every month for each officer.
Good deal. Does each one of these have to have their different, yeah, do they have to, or? All right, so I guess, go, no, that was just the first reading on that one, so go on down to the body worn camera custody and control policy.
Okay. So the purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines for custody and control of body worn cameras used by officers of the Hartford Police Department. This policy ensures that body worn cameras are properly maintained and recorded footage is securely stored and maintained in accordance with legal requirements. So if the policy applies to HPD officers who are issued the body worn cameras for use and performance of their duties.
All right, thank you. And the last one is Resolution 2024.
There's video.
Yeah.
Camera and incinerator.
Sorry, she added to my list. Okay, the incinerator policy as well.
Yeah, but the purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines and procedures for the Hartford Police Department's use of portable incinerators for the destruction of evidence upon the directives of the courts. This policy aims to ensure the proper handling and disposal of evidence in compliance with legal environmental regulations.
All right, thank you. And last.
Do you need three motions?
Huh?
Need three motions.
So I need three motions on them? I thought that was just the first reading on the policy.
No, policies don't have to happen.
Sorry, okay, all right.
So if you want to do camera?
Okay, so the first one, I'll need a motion to accept this policy for the body worn video recording.
I make a motion to accept the policy of the body worn video recording.
A second.
I have a first and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sigh, motion carries. The second one will be the body worn camera custody and control policy.
I make a motion that we accept the body worn camera custody and control policy.
A second.
I have a first and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sigh, motion carries. And then the police policy incinerator use for evidence, I'll need a motion for that policy as well.
Motion for that.
He's gonna beat y'all down here on missing it now.
I'll second.
All right. I have a first and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sigh, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Chief, I got one question about the retention and disposal. It kinda says in here the appropriate length of time. What is that? Is there, is there a?
It'll be the state and federal guidelines of records retention, so we would fall back on that. Usually, within 30 days of each, within each year, basically, each officer would, I would review each officer's interaction, at least one interaction.
I've already done that.
And after that, it goes back to the cloud, and we can refer to.
We'll go back and run up.
I think it's an indefinite amount of time that they better store in the cloud, so.
Okay, thank you.
Tony, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, now we're gonna go back to financial audit with Dan Drain.
Thank you, Chief.
Good afternoon, Grayning Company, this is 15.
Yes, can I speak with Dan, please?
Hold on just a moment.
Dan, this is Lisa from Hartford, and I have you on speakerphone.
All right.
We did not receive our financial audits, so what we would like to do is for you to go ahead and go through them, and once that thing come in the mail, then I will get those to the council members.
So you never got them, even though they were post office?
We did not get them, sorry.
Okay. So does the council have copies of anything?
We have one that's floated through.
Okay, all right. Well, we always start with two page staple, it's called the S14 report. And all it does is power communication with the council to let you know what you've been audit and that what the high points are. There are these things in there, no disagreement of management, no consultation with CPA's as far as audit itself. So basically, the audit itself is clear opinion, there are no exceptions in it anyway. There's a, the person has a segment of position which is a business-like basis. Because in this presentation, governmental activity shows yet position which is essentially like to work with nearly $5 million. This type of activity, such as water and sewer sanitation, is about half a million. City overall has a yet position, or as close as you get in that world, the city government of almost half a million dollars. Then we do another segment of activities, which is on the same basis, and it indicates that governmental activities, basically, that's a cemetery, Russian general, government public safety, fire, police streets, was basically worth a billion, $600,000. Then there are few charges for services, but the bulk of that is funded by low point $2 million, either transfers or property taxes, insurance taxes. So bottom line, it's a net position based on $12,000 except for $91,000 on business type activities. The expense for that is over $2 million. Most of that was under the charge of services. Bottom line, sort of change, net change, $100,000, $900,000. So the city overall had positive change, $205,000. And there's balance sheet, and it's reported account, non-majors, more like what you're custodian, basically. And the fund balance on that is three and a half million. Then there's several charges that come to it, to go with the business side, but because of the 5 million, the bulk of that is capital assets, and the services are in progress, partially coming, from those charges that have to be made because of the CRS and the related insurance liabilities. Then the revenues, channel fund revenues, are due to sort of $2 million, be spent to sort of $2 million. There's some transfers in that, so, so that change was a loss of about $30,000. In non-major, was a loss of about $40,000. So governmental, governmental funds, that's low, of $79,233. And there's, I just, it shows how you get a debt, $12,791 positive. Then there's a bright day on a balance sheet, with water, sewer, sanitation, engine, second part on that, less than $25 million. Water was plus $200,000, service plus $16,000, and facial was a negative $25 million. Cash flows was positive, water, positive, sewer. Again, the sanitation had an increase of about $31,000 in one year. Cash itself, if you're called, there are always several pages, it's always supposed to be, you're not particularly reliable, they just have to be in there. There's a page that shows governmental activities, showing what's in your government balance, $3 million in additions, places left, they have about $3.5 million, business sonic works and sanitation. It had a net increase of about $545,000. $202,000 of governmental depreciation. Water, $33,000 of depreciation. And there's, I'll show, changes in long-term debt. Everything was delished, except the $27,000, this payable on the power truck. Lots of pages related to these, and insurance, general fund budget, show a, the change in fund balance was supposed to be $99,000, actually was a $30,000, extra money, so changes in fund balance, actually for sure, $130,000. Lots more pages of retirement and insurance, there's some supplementary information, should break down. Special revenue funds, cemetery fund was positive, $47,000, dirt LDA was negative, $3,600. Road fund was negative, about $25,000. But the road fund is really a function of time, because some years, you get all the revenue, you keep it to the office, next year, you shouldn't want the revenue. You pay the present account, and you spend the reserves. No retorts, no manageable error, no, no penalties as far as account control and compliance. So does anybody have any questions, or was it solved with you, or with the, he said it happened to you.
I think they're all good, Dan, I appreciate you doing that, appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. How if you're getting those tomorrow, and you know, if you wanna call back, or if you wanna reach another, another phone call, I'll be able to assist you.
Okay, all right, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So overall, I think that was pretty good. It's always good to have to get an A. Let's see, now, I've got this Resolution 2024-01. Or we already voted on that one, didn't we? Body cams, have we already done that one?
Yeah. No, you voted on body, his policy, not a resolution to do the grant.
Thank you, that's why you're, we're here beside. All right, do you care to explain that grant that you're going after?
So basically, it's a law enforcement.
Where is that?
Last grant, the protection grant. So we're working with Amy Mahfany, I think that's how you pronounce her name, with Grad, she's currently, I don't have a copy of that.
Here you go, just read that resolution.
Okay.
And basically, that's given the okay for the grant to be written on the resolution side of it.
The Resolution, the City of Hartford Kentucky authorized the mayor to make application for this, for end upon arrival, to enter agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to execute any documents that are deemed necessary by KOHS to facilitate and administer the project and act as authorized correspondent for this project. Whereas the City of Hartford, Ohio County, Kentucky desires to make application to law enforcement protection program funds for a project to be administered by the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security. Whereas it is recognized for the application of the approval of Kentucky Office of Homeland Security funds to impose certain obligations and responsibilities upon the city. Now therefore, will be resolved the 28th day of March by the City of Hartford, Ohio County, Kentucky. The mayor hereby authorized to execute, furnish all required documentation, including memorandum of agreement, and may, as may be required by KOHS. For the furtherance of the above referenced project, that act, to act as authorized correspondent for this project.
Thank you. All right, so I will need a, I need a motion to accept this resolution.
Motion's over. Resolution.
I have a, have a first and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sigh, motion carries. Thank you. Chris, do you care to come up for a minute?
Just basically give the rundown on the water meters. Okay. Our water meters, they've been in the ground since, I think we started putting the Hershey meters in in 2004. The Hershey meters have got where they're slowing down, they're not as accurate, people, we're not getting the revenue we're supposed to be getting out of them. We have purchased a few of them here in the last six months to a year, and we've been putting them in the ground as soon as we can get them. But we are starting to see revenue gains, there's a lot of people getting minimum bill for well over a year, and we're just now starting to see revenue from them. Me and Lisa has talked a little bit, and I would like to say about purchasing some more meters to update them, because a lot of them pass their life expectancy. The life expectancy on the meters we have are 15 years, so they're, they're getting right there, added or past their life expectancy. We would like to ask for around 500 meters, and they're $140 a piece, so it would make it around $70,000.
Right, at 62.5 is what I got.
And that's the, we gotta do it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There was a little bit of a price increase on the meters.
So how many of y'all put in so far?
We, I think I had me in town as a Friday, they probably put in almost 170 to almost
How many more we like to go?
Oh, well, the 500 would not completely change them all out, but we would still, that would get us three quarters of the way. We probably would still need another three or four hundred after that.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and as soon as possible, get them all replaced, if we're losing money on them.
I'll second that.
All right, with that motion, where do you all would like this to come out of?
Do we have ARPA funds?
Yes.
I would also say this thing on the new meters that we're, that we have, we're purchasing is a lot more accurate, there's no moving parts to them to slow down, so they, if they go out, they just go out. There's no chance of them slowing down or us losing revenue.
What's the turnaround time to get those? Because I know they're, they're taking a while.
Some of them takes a while. This company is not as bad as the other one that we used to get, so I would say in a few months, we should have them.
Jerry, do you want your motion to reflect purchase through ARPA funds?
Yes.
I got a first and second to purchase the water meters out of ARPA.
And change mine first.
It'll be the first call.
Okay.
Yeah, you do mine last.
Please do, church.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sigh, motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Hey, Chris, what are we doing with the old meters that were taken out? Are they recyclable? Can we do anything with those?
What we do with them, we break them down, and if we get a certain amount of them, whether it's worth anything, we take them and take them to the scrapyard.
Okay.
Yeah, we get something out of them.
All right, thank you. Okay, we did the opening bid of the cemetery on 3/8/24 for the three-year contract. We only had two bids come in, one, the first one being Law &amp; Order, 1,350 weekly, 41,850 yearly. The second one being Beaverdam Emergency at $50,222. I'll need a motion to approve one of these bids.
I make a motion that we approve Law &amp; Order based on the bid price and their past work.
I have a first.
I'll second it.
Second by Jerry Lickens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sigh, motion carries. Thank you.
They still gonna get the banker or the ball?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep.
Is that Jordan?
Yep.
Jordan's?
Yep. Okay, I'll go first on discussion, or does anybody in the public have anything? So Tara, I've got a road that I'd like to see about maybe where we're at on the city.
Got that one over, Phillips Taylor?
No, Victoria Drive.
Yes, Lisa, the condition to be in passing this week about whether or not.
And then, there was, there was no, it's kind of like in a limbo, so I'd like to see what we can do to, and also Collins Road.
Collins?
Collins Harvest.
Oh.
Little bridge?
No, Collins is, that is a city road up to his driveway, I believe.
Really?
I believe when that was all annexed in, you had holdouts, where there was a small section back there, it does not even have any limits.
We check and see where we're at.
I'll check, I'll look at that.
Because he's called me a couple times on the road work being done and stuff.
It's a very limited area.
And I know Jason had told me in the past that it was something that we typically didn't maintain, or something of that sort, so.
All okay, can you send me the map?
So just see where we're at, just to see. Also, an update on the playground equipment. It will be delivered probably in 10 to 12 weeks, middle of June, so that's something that's, it's kind of a holdup getting it here, but we can look forward to seeing that. And also, just to give you all an idea on the grant that was awarded, the total, the total grant was $87,000. The in-con labor match is gonna be around $12,000, with that, with the other portion of that being $75,600. So that's something that we're going to have to look at. And the stage has been ordered, and Mary's still working on the wall mural.
We're doing the Easter egg, Easter egg thing this week.
Oh, yeah, and the goat, the scavenger egg hunts this week as well, so it's something for somebody to get out and have fun with.
On the wall, do you have any idea when they may be doing that?
They're still working, we talked to one, and I guess they kind of opted out of it, but she's got in contact with another. She said that he was in Australia at the time that he called, so. She said that he was in Australia at the time that he called, so...
It shouldn't take him there.
Yeah, so maybe when he gets back from Australia, he'll, uh, let us know. And then I've got, um, Meredith and Tim Griffin working on the speaker, so hopefully we'll get something rolling on that as well, so... That's all the updates I have. Tara, do you have anything? Do you care to, uh, just maybe elaborate a little bit on some of the code enforcement stuff? That's no name mentions or anything?
Yes. So, uh, Lisa and I have been chatting. We've got us a new code enforcement officer now and a board, and so we have been making sure that we're compliant with all of our ordinances at this point. Um, I know that she's been very diligent on making sure that these, these citations that are going out are properly notified because if they don't request hearing after seven days, that, that citation will come to the board. She and I have talked about how we make sure that that gets proper notice, and then she has filed liens. I've given her an updated lien form to make that a little bit easier for moving forward. Um, and so we're going to start. Now that those are actually filed, that's something that we can actually take action on. It's something that we've been kind of holding back because we couldn't take action until we've gotten procedural lien close to take care of.
Right.
She's done a good job about trying to get those under.
Um, I'd like for the code enforcement board to set up a time, sometime to get together, uh, speak on... I know we've tried this in the past, but it's important to see what we can do on our ordinances and see what we can do to stiffen, stiffen it up a little bit, so... And if you, maybe when we set that up, you can kind of elaborate in that meeting as well, just to kind of...
And, and I will say that that's something that came up not too terribly long ago, but Lisa, I think we last updated those twenty one or eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Uh, we did kind of, at that particular stage, consider making, making things a little bit more stringent and tougher on people who aren't maintaining properties. I think that the consensus of the council at that time was, given some of the economic hardships that a lot of people were facing, it would be more difficult, but, uh...
Well, and I, I don't know if Beaverdame has passed the ordinance yet. He might elaborate on that. Have they, on the landowners for renters, have they passed that ordinance on, on enforce, code enforcement?
They discussed that, and I think passed it last year.
Okay.
On the code enforcement or the water accounts?
See, I can't remember. I know the water passed.
Because that was a government brought up several years ago, and it did not go over well.
Well, a bunch of landowners showed up for torches and pitchforks and then realized, oh, the city's doing this for us. They actually helped us. And so then everyone put the torches out and went home. Uh, so it was, it was kind of weird, but I think they also... They might have figured out there's something that they were wanting to do that they couldn't come in.
Well, I think...
It runs together.
I think if we could just maybe change the ordinance to stiffen it up a little bit, that'd be the approach to take first and maybe...
I would suggest that if any council members or you mayor have certain things in there that you'd like to see, if you could maybe submit that as a list, and when we go over that with the board, when they submit their final comments on it, that'd be something that, you know, it'd be, be more efficient use of their time, I think, because it's hard to get them all together.
Yep, I agree. All right. All right, thank you, Tara. Uh, Jeff, do you have anything?
Uh, just a question about the, uh, the grant. Can we, like, set up a, like, a priority list of what we want to do first or what if...
Um, I don't know when that, it could be another year before we could see that money. That's, that's the downfall to it. We can discuss that. I don't, do you, refresh me on that. What was all on that grant?
Uh, so we, we did a, a lighting upgrade.
Right.
We did.
Vincing upgrade.
Vincing upgrade, uh, black topping, the resurfacing, new oil resurfacing.
Oh, the basketball court. Okay.
Uh, and then there was some, some work to be done to, like, the infield and stuff like that, but that's way outside of, I would say, top three priorities on, on getting the thing done and get it playable.
I will, I will email, uh, D L G and see when the possibilities of those funds would be available. Um, of course, we'd probably have to get with a couple of contractors to help us out on the, uh, holes. And we'll have to have quotes on that as well, so, um, once we...
I know, I, I think, who was it that submitted the lighting? We use them on...
Taylors.
Yeah, Taylor, uh, just using the, the same poles we have, just re, like, changing the lights out to...
LEDs.
LEDs. I, I think that's what we asked their, their request to be, their, their bid to be.
All right. Yeah, I'll, I'll email D L G on that and see when we can look forward to those finances becoming available. I've always, I've always jokingly said that the governor probably has a stack of papers on his desk, and when he gets a chance to look at it, he'll go through them when he can.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And now, Mr. Coleman?
I just have one complaint. We're going to have to get these dogs on the streets. I'm serious. Rockwell got a hook to a little woman this morning on Union. I happened to stop, got it, and just run it loose. I mean, not just in Smith, uh, Smith Street, uh, T, sure his husband was running, and them little dogs bit at his ankles, copping each other.
I've been in communication down there with a couple of lights that came into my office.
Right.
Hopefully, uh, I have to go down there and put them in a headlock and put them on my car.
I guess...
Put Jeremy on it.
I guess my question on that, Tara, is there's a policy in effect on animals that's dated back, I think, nineteen eighty-three?
At Anil's Camp Park.
But, I mean, is there anything, or can we, do we just follow suit with the county's policy on...
So it's, it's one of those areas where we have an ordinance that is actionable, that we can cite somebody on and take them, you know, bring them up as a violation to the district court. The county has a countywide ordinance that is, um, more developed and thorough, which governs more about animal, proper animal management, pet management, that doesn't necessarily leave some plant law ordinance, but it is a bit more engaging, and they have, uh, they appropriated an actual set aside fund for animal control officer to enforce that. Chief York, would you like to have the animal control officer? It definitely would be about the only way that, that Hartford could enforce successfully from what they're currently doing. Now, and she, and I, I personally contacted her several times. She, she does a fantastic job with what she's given. She's got a very large...
I think she's got a large county to deal with.
Yes, uh, but, uh, it does get, and she, and she cares for those animals, and she does try very, very, uh, try very hard to get along with them. But if we have specific complaints that we can bring up with her, and then she takes that to the county, we can add in a, a Hartford charge as a violation of our own ordinances. But it's really kind of one of those things where we have it on the books. Enforcement, if it comes down to the personnel that you have, it will be wrong.
Is there a way to retire the, the animal control position for that lawsuit?
I could look into it. There may be a way that animal control kind of falls under code enforcement, so that, that it would take away the current aspect of it. Not that it would only be under our code enforcement, which would be assessed fine, but forfeiting animal... That's getting into a really gray, murky area, and also it possibly conflicts with the county's, county law. So I think honestly, we're better off working hand in hand with animal control. And when you receive a complaint, that way she can, it's almost without, without saying doubled up, but I mean, that's essentially what you're doing. You can hear violation of the county, but you're also specifically in charge of it.
I, I know all the other counties. Uh, from Warren County to me and York, it doesn't, don't hold less against them. But the county, the sheriff's department houses all the dogs up there.
Yeah, it's, it's just one of those things where not every little municipality can afford their own animal control officers. And that's why it's kind of always, they have a rule, but how do we enforce it without the assistance of the county officer?
That's why dogs run around and just lick...
It's a very unique position in itself.
Yes.
And it's, um...
It was discussed at the last...
So, I mean, it's, it's very...
There is, we, again, though, this runs into enforcement. I mean, there, there is the, you know, concept of passing warrants where we require any pets inside the city limits to be licensed. Uh, then you can have an animal license, of course, then you got enforcement of that. Same thing, you know, we pass these laws about off car permits and stuff, and if it's not being enforced, it's, it's just a waste of transportation. So it's, you know, and not, nothing against our police, but they're very limited people for, for how much we've got going on and what they have in progress.
And deadline on the, uh, banned properties needs to be mailed out by May fifteenth?
Fifteenth is the deadline, and, and usually we just basically get that listed and send out the posters.
So I guess we need to, if anybody knows of any, let's see if we can prioritize a list for banned properties.
I think most of the moms there are already on it, and probably not very many additions.
So we're going to see if we can, what we can do there. Stacey, do you have anything?
Well, I second the dog issue. Uh, a merchant, a local merchant has brought to my attention the food truck issue again and the ordinance possibly changing. And, um, you know, whatever's chosen to do with that, I would not like to be a part of that committee.
I thought we already decided that. The last time we went through all this, we weren't going to.
There was no resolution, and now it's being brought back up, so...
Well, there's still no regulation. That's the way it is.
Well, and when I was contacted, I, you know, I said, you know, we all came to the table, there was no resolution. It really was a fuss and match is what it was. And then we just, I think at the time, agreed to just disband it. Um, and when I was talking to the merchant, I said, you know, the policy at the time was wanting to be rushed through when in hindsight, we really needed to review it more because there was nothing in there at that time that you couldn't park right in front of somebody if you wanted to. So my, I wanted conditions that were going to protect the merchant as well as protect all Hartford citizens by freedom of choice. So it, there was nothing resolved. Yes, we redid the ordinance. Um, it was not voted on. Not all parties were happy. There was no resolution, so we just left it. So if it's brought back up, I'm just going on record that I do not want to be a part of it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess what we could do to...
I didn't know of them.
I guess what we could do to visit, visit this, um, we still have that policy, I guess, that was written up the past one.
We have the last draft, uh, you know, that station was definitely a thing.
I say we can put that on the agenda, and, um, we can review that again. There was a lot of reviews on this, so if y'all have any questions before the next meeting, let's get with Tara and see what we can do to clean the language up to benefit the citizens as well as, as the business owners here in Hartford. If we're all in agreement, I say we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting. If it dies at the table, then it dies at the table, and maybe we can regroup with something else. Thank you.
Could you check with other counties and see what they're doing?
I have contacted a few, and I think Jer, uh, Jeffy reached out to a few different ones, too. I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of like a...
I was just looking at grabbing it in various arms.
Yeah.
Your biggest issue isn't so much of technical choice for people. I think a lot of it was, I didn't know if they're trying to come in and out for them just to pay a one-time fee. They are, they, they have a lot less skin to be given than some certain order people. And so it's, uh, I think it's not so much of saying, hey, you don't want food trucks. It's just as you come in to most places, like I think up in Golden Green or something, you have so many opportunities at this price to set up inside the city limits. And then if you want to do more than this, it's like a tier system, I think, is how, how they set up.
So we'll look into that, and, um, we'll get everybody a copy of the old one, and then if there's any language that you would like to try to clean up before the next meeting, I'd ask that y'all reach out to Tara as well on that and see what we can come to an agreement on, if that's the case that the council still moves to do.
Yes, I think as it's written at this point, there's not even anything about distance from...
No, there is...
And that, that's one thing I wanted in there.
And, and those are all things that I think are very valid concerns. I think it was just a, it was a hot issue that people were not necessarily having the full time, like you said, working at it in a thorough.
It was just more of, in, you know, emotions were heightened, but it was more of a fuss than, then, okay, I understand what you're trying to say. I understand what you're trying to say. What can we come together and resolve? And there was none of that. So, um, I think if it's revisited with, you know, just all the players recently discussing solution, and that's... I mean, one merchant said they had their druthers, they would not have any food trucks allowed ever. I'm like, oh, okay, well, that's not real effective either.
Yeah, it's not a reasonable resolution.
Right. So that, that's how the conversation went. I think Mary Bell was kind of done.
Yeah.
And nothing was resolved, so...
All right.
Me and Mary went up to the nursing home and talked.
Yeah, we talked to them as well, because that, I think that was a, that was a hard-headed area.
Well, and how, I got a phone call is that, uh, there was a food truck invited right in front of the radio station. When, you know, it's right down there downtown by our two lunch restaurants, uh, and that, you know...
Well, that's not parked in anybody's front door to serve food.
They were, yeah.
That's the problem right there. They don't want anybody within seeing distance.
I, I'm going to say that, and I went, I went Mary Bell on that. I don't know that that was directly in front of a merchant or anything. But I will say that when they do food trucks down there, Mayor, uh, it's very, very hard to see you pulling out right there off of Washington. Uh, and I would like to see them sent back more because it, it's very difficult to see the traffic. I've almost...
Well, at the same time, can we get people to mow down some of their bushes that are on corners, too? I mean, you know, it's the same difference.
If it's within the city right of way, then that's, then the city can do that.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lichens, do you have anything?
I should, but I don't.
All right.
Mary Bell, you have anything?
I could say a lot, but it's best I'm not.
All right.
Amen on that.
You don't even know what your tongue meant, you.
I can hear you mumbling over there.
All right, Tony, do you have anything? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I like those.
A first, second by Jerry, I think. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Holds like a side, motion carries. Motion...